Twenty twenty-five, we'll call to order this meeting of the Kingston Planning Board. Start with introductions. To my left, Rob Trusolo, Planning Board member. Peter Coffin, Planning Board member. I'm Robin Dugay, Acting Chair for the evening for Lynn Merrill. Rob and Carter, our Land Use Administrator. Ellie Alessio, Selectmen's Rep., and Glenn Greenwood, Town Planner. We have a few proposed zoning articles to move forward that we've talked about in various capacities over the last few weeks. So we'll start with those. The first is the grade plan and building height. With a proposal to modify or add grade plane building height requirements to the following articles for consistency and stay within the town requirements for life safety purposes. Those would be added to Article 102 Historic District, adding a new section to HD2 102.5 B1.
Do you want to do them one at a time?
Probably, right?
Yeah, I'm going to go to number one. Now, I'll make a motion. Just remind us why it was that we had to carry the rulebook, the changes we made from last time?
I think there-
We just hadn't got, we had only done it in Historic District 1, not in Historic District 2.
Oh, that was what-
And so now this mimics what we began-
Oh, historic-
So it'll just be consistent throughout.
To include Historic District-
Oh, right, okay. So I'll, um, motion is made to move and add the proposed language for building height standards grade plane to the twenty twenty-five warrant ballot, including Historic District 2 as printed.
Second.
Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Ellie Alessio. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Next article is the citizen, was a citizen petition zoning article, and it's a proposed article pertaining to the rezoning for a portion of Tax Map R-19 Lot 15 from commercial three to the rural residential zone.
And the Board of Selectmen did have it reviewed for form-
Yes, we did.
-by Town Council, who got back to accept that it is back in progress.
Yeah.
And so the Planning Board, we don't make any changes to these. We accept them as they're written. Once they're, once it's confirmed that they're legitimate for the warrant. But the Board does have to consider whether they want to approve or disapprove-
Right.
-this citizen petition, and because there has to be a notice, a notation put on the actual ballot that states that, so.
So we don't actually, this, the way the motion's written here, we don't actually make a motion to move it because it's already-
Correct, it's already, it's already-
So we would make a motion to approve, no, just the word?
Yes, the, the words, the two words offered in the statute are approved or disapproved.
Approved, disapproved. So I would make, is there, do you want to discuss this at all? We've discussed it.
I think we've talked about it.
We've talked about it. It's the one with the, the lot line adjustment for-
The sub- Come at, yeah, so those to residential, and we've talked it twice, both when they're in here and then last time. So I'll make a motion that we, the Planning Board approve the proposed citizen petition article pertaining to the rezoning for a portion of Tax Map R-19 Lot 15 from commercial three to the residential zone as written to the twenty twenty, sorry, as written.
Second.
Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Ellie Alessio. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. And then the final is Planning Board Regulation. The Board will- Why does it say that like this? Alright, so this is proposed language to amend Article 901. Driveway Permit Regulations, Section 901.1A Design Criteria, and Section 901.1C as proposed. And those were-
Basically, it's the application procedure which is online and-
Yep.
And the, and the time for payment being made once the application has been reviewed.
Right, the way we had it didn't really reflect the way that it was actually happening.
Right.
And so we amended it to accomplish that.
And perhaps it's up to say that Lynn had voted against that, but the Board had voted a majority in favor of that. So, and then it looks like there's, we need to make two motions, one for the, of that.
Doesn't look like it.
We have it under, we have two.
It was just a procedural thing to make sure they could go online to apply for the permit.
Right.
Right, and number seven is part of the paragraph that we've, that is spoken to here in that first statement. So it should go through as one thing.
Well, and so that was, we changed the word better because to reflect the state law, classified with better, that's three of one, I'd say. So I'll make a motion to amend Article 901 Driveway Permit Regulations. Sections 901.1 Alpha and 901.1 Charlie 7, as created.
And this is just a vote by the Board, is that what the Town Meeting?
No, it's not good, it's not good-
Once you do this vote this evening, we'll make changes in the vote. I say we will.
We'll make changes in the vote.
Second.
Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Ellie Alessio. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. So I just read this note, but clearly I should have read before the meeting started, so sorry. But we'll pause here, so I would like to introduce Chris Patnott, who Mayor, may not have said, I don't know if folks knew that Chris was here, as a potential additional member of the Planning Board. Chris, I don't know, if you want to come up to the table, you can. There's no reason to sit in the-
Pull up a chair. Turn the mic over.
So.
I forgot about that too.
So we really, really need you to learn.
What's that?
Green button.
Is he here, or is he just, did he start recording?
No, he's here. Oh, you're here, okay. Sorry, we just forgot. We just forgot to turn our mics on.
Oh, I can hear you. That's why I said it.
Okay.
I don't think anybody did.
No. Well, somebody, so.
It's Gray Way is coming in from the front.
I don't know, maybe mine's just exceptional and is picking up all the-
Oh, yours is on.
Mine's on.
So it's probably picking me up.
Then yours is just an exception.
Yeah, obviously.
Trying to keep up.
Um, so Chris, these are super high tech. And if you just press it till the green button is on, you're good, you're fine. Um, so there are a couple options, Chris, for you to consider, and I think for other people who know more about this procedure than me to help explain. But you have the potential to join the Board as an alternate volunteer who comes and gets appointed sort of on a case-by-case basis if we're short voting members. Or you could be appointed to fill a vacancy through the time of the next election, and then you would be a full Planning Board member and could be, you'd have to run for reelection, or run for election. And then be voted in to have it be, oh, I think it's a three-year term that's vacant, is that correct?
It depends what seat you run for.
Are there two vacant?
I think it's two.
Okay, so either a two or a three-year seat.
One vacant and then pick this one.
One partial, one full three-year term.
Okay. Um, so not necessarily pressure to answer this evening, but if you have some thoughts, a bell. Oh, you did? Perfect.
What would be most beneficial to be in most of?
Option B. Option B. Come join us.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm going to come and figure, jump in.
Amen.
Have someone full-time here.
Because if we fill, no matter what we do, even if we're filling one that has a couple of years to go, don't we still have them run?
Yes.
They have to run.
They would not.
But you only get appointed to March election.
Right, so it makes, it really makes no effective difference.
Which, which seat, yeah.
Really, if you want to run.
But you should sign on the three-year term. This filing opens January 20th.
Filing period opens January 20th till January 30th, I think, and you just go downstairs and see Tammy Bakie, Town Clerk.
Right, but in the meantime-
We could swear every Friday night.
We can appoint him, he can go swear in, he could be at the next meeting as a full Board member, or as an alternate, and you'd be voting alternate, because we don't have a full Board, so anyway, so it really makes no difference what position, but it's probably easier if you go as a full Board member.
Make the commitment.
Yeah.
And then the tattoos get issued. This is a little tall.
Wow.
Have you watched the new season?
I have, I haven't finished the old one.
I'm saving it.
Um, so what would be the procedure? We would vote?
This, this Board can vote to appoint him as a full member right now.
And with the understanding that when he, you would need to go see Tammy to be sworn in, and then file the paperwork to be on the ballot for March.
Yeah, well, that's not a contingency. If you join, and between now and January 20th, you decide you don't like it, and you don't want to run one for reelection, your appointment would expire in March, but I don't want to see that happen.
It's because it's so fun.
But, but, but right now, what we do is we vote to appoint you to, as a member, a board member. You get sworn in, and you start effectively immediately for a term that expires in March. And then the other part of it is, we would request that you also run.
You need to run, Fire. You can, you come, join, roll your sleeves up. It's interesting.
When they run, do people do signs and stuff? I don't, I don't take for the Planning Board, do they?
So I, I can speak to my-
Only when it gets contested.
Yeah. I have signs, but I only put them out if I'm, if there's opposition, which there really was the first time I ran.
Ah.
And I only have tattoos on, so, and they went-
No one's batting down the doors, trust me, you'll be fine. Tammy can fill you in on a lot of that stuff.
And then maybe three.
If I just got it, so I can-
We'll give you a hand, not to worry.
Do you work for an entity? You look so-
Alright, so if Chris is on board, all we need is a motion then to appoint-
I'll move that we appoint, that the Board appoints Chris Patnott as a full member and direct him to get sworn, sworn in as soon as possible by Tammy Bakie.
Second.
Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Ellie Alessio. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
And, and-
It's a show now.
Right.
Tomorrow, next day, it does.
Yeah, Tammy's not here tonight, right?
No, no, no.
She's on Monday night.
Monday night.
So yeah, Tammy's here every day of the week.
Except Friday.
Oh, she's not even here.
Well, lately, she's been, she's been off on Friday. We'll be closed this Friday.
So avoid her.
I'll be away Friday.
She's open Monday night till seven.
Okay.
I think it was Monday till seven. Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Great, welcome aboard.
Um, and I believe that means Chris can vote on anything we talk about moving forward? No?
Tomorrow, I mean, next week, after it's sworn in, yeah.
But he could participate in the discussion, ask questions.
Yeah.
But he can't vote.
Okay. I don't know that there's anything.
There's really not, there's nothing.
Earthshatter. Here on out, so.
We're really not taking it very seriously.
So the next, or the first item of Board Business is the acceptance of the December 3rd 2024 minutes. So if anyone would like to make a motion, or-
Yeah, those are pretty brief. I'll move that we accept them as written. I didn't see any errors.
We'll keep it rolling.
Motion by Peter, second by Ellie Alessio. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next up is the voluntary lot merger request for Derek in the full later for map U4 lots 29 and 30 to 44 Grace Line Park Road. Plan D44E23 is proposed.
I move that we approve that merger request.
He has amended the deeds so that they are all in the same name, and that's what the Planning Board basically verifies to send the lot merger onto the-
Yeah, lot mergers don't require us, other than, because it's obviously increasing the size of a lot, so it, it's, even if it's substandard, it doesn't matter.
It's, it's a beautiful thing.
Yeah. So I, and we've obviously discussed this one quite a bit when the original realignment was done, so I still don't see any reason why to, it should be held up at all. And the only thing we need is a statement from you saying that it doesn't violate any zoning-
It does not.
Okay. I'll move that we vote to approve the lot merger.
I already did.
Oh, you did? Oh, sorry, I'll second that.
You can second this one.
Sorry.
Motion by Ellie, second by Peter. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Um-
DRI.
Determination of Regional Impact for the Major Sandborne Seminary LLC Site Plan Proposal located at 178 Main Street, MAP R34 Lot 17.
Okay, so I, my recommendations would just go through these, one, one through six, and state whether it's relevant or not, and I'm willing to do that. Relative size of, or number of dwelling units as compared with existing stock. I don't remember what the total number is, but it's, it's not-
It's 13, it's 13 units, single-family units, and 12 apartment, condo apartments in the seminary, so it's 25 new structures.
Right, and compared to the big project that we've talked about-
Yeah, compared to what we thought we were getting.
Getting, yeah. So I would say that, especially as it applies to regional impact, it's, it's, it has, almost has no impact at all. So I would say that, that is not real, that number one, it's not, the number of dwelling units has no impact. And I guess, do we want to just show concurrence or whatever on each one, or just?
I would suggest that we let Chris know what we're doing.
Oh, okay, so this is pretty easy. Every-
Large project.
Develop, not, not large project, any development that comes, whether it's commercial, or residential, or anything else that comes before it is required by any land use board to have a determinate variation of regional impact made before it comes before the Board officially. So that worksheet that Rob had printed out is a summation of the RSA that discusses that. And to determine whether something has regional impact or not, we look at all these different factors that could cause regional impact. It's not exclusive, but it's a good, good guide. And there's also a, something from Rocky and Planning Commission gives a little bit more concrete analysis if something is, you know, if we have doubts about something, we can look at their recommendations. So right now, we're talking about whether this development, because it's a housing development, would affect other towns surrounding us, because we were putting in a large number, for example, of, of new housing units that would have an effect on the other towns. And there is one factor that we'll talk about later on, number six, where it talks about school districts. But as, as far as, you know, the number, the impact on, for example, the number, compared to the number of housing units in Exeter, for example, anything that we put in Kingston's, probably not going to be, have that much impact. The second item is proximity to the borders of a neighboring community. This, this is a seminary, it's in Senatorless Town, it's not close to borders, so.
Can I pause for one second? So before we move to the second question, we don't need a formal motion, correct?
No, we'll have a motion again, that we do not do or do not think it has regional-
So we don't need to consider each of these in different-
No, I would say that if anybody disagrees with what I'm recommending here, that they, and I'm sure nobody's shy about speaking up, if they have a different opinion about that, but, including Glenn.
If it had regional impact. If the project has a regional impact, we would have to notify budding towns and have them get certified mail for hearings. And that was the purpose of having regional impact discussion. Because if it impacts our neighbors, they have a right to come to the hearings and participate in the discussion, even though the vote is still through this particular Board. That's, that's the rationale.
Yeah. And we, we had one recently, Cell Tower, right on the, I mean, right on the town line. The only, residences is impact for another town, so, you know, that was obvious, but this one's not close to bordering a neighboring community, so I would say that's not an impact. Transportation network, it's not of a size that's going to affect transportation network in surrounding towns. Even if it was a bigger project and it affected Main Street, that would only be us. Anticipated emissions such as light, noise, smoke, odors, or particles. Now, obviously, that's probably more likely to affect commercial developments, industrial developments, and things like that. And we have light and noise ordinances, and they're, obviously, you're going to have to comply when they go through the planning procedures. Procedures here in front of us. Proximity to aquifers or surface waters which transcend minuscule boundaries. Aquifers are a big thing in Kingston. We have a lot of underground water, and some of them do flow into other towns. But this is a normal septic system for these houses, and it's got to be approved by environmental, the New Hampshire DES. So I don't think that's a factor. The final one is shared facilities such as schools and solid-based disposal facilities. And that would be the one, since Newton and Kingston comprise a school district. If this was a large project that had a lot of new housing, it might affect the school district. Have to be pretty big. Right now, the school district is, the, the school facilities are under, underutilized.
Underutilized, right.
That'd be, and so I would say that a small impact like this, so I would say one-third of the houses would probably have kids or something, you know, whatever the, the number is that we had presented earlier, that would have actually a positive effect on the school district. Having said that, though, I think any, any development that poses a number of of school-aged kids, we should give a courtesy notification to Newton, but I don't think it has an impact on them, because it's just not a big enough development, not enough kids. And, and if you look at the RPC guidance, so they say has, would have a detrimental impact. And so that would be-
It won't have any impact.
And so, it said, well, it won't have an impact, and if, if, if any impact it would have would be positive, because it would help add kids into the school system that we'd need. So given the fact that all those considerations are made, that all of these six considerations have been discussed, and unless I hear otherwise, I don't think there's any impact that requires regional impact notification. And so I would move that we find that this is a development without regional impact. So, that's a motion?
That we determine.
That determine there's no regional impact.
So motion by Peter, second by Ellie. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
My just part, I want to, you mentioned, are you saying you want me to send in a ballot's numbers to them?
I, I, I think that when I said it's an informal notification, it would be nice if, if Newton was notified of this development.
You notify the superintendent of Schools for the district.
Oh, district. That, that's good. Yeah, because it doesn't affect the town.
No, it's, it's the district, school district, so it shouldn't go to the superintendent. And if you done that, then it's, it's-
And the courtesy notification because of, of future plans for that, you know, they say, well, 25 minutes, that may be-
Let's not rub their noses in this.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's live with the superintendent's eyes.
That's great, Eric.
Yes, well, yeah.
Am I correct?
Yes, yes.
The Sandmore Regional School District was-
Yeah, that's perfect.
Alright, moving on. Glenn, I think I might need some help, given the note I have here. So there's an extension request for Dan Parks that we discussed at the last meeting.
We did indeed.
For the second to last meeting, and-
Yes, and, oh no, that was our last meeting, intended.
And he's looking for a five-year extension on his sand pit operation.
Which would be fine if he, if his existing extension hasn't lapsed, but I can find nothing that says that it hasn't lapsed. I, let me rephrase that. I can find no signed document that says it got extended to 2025. In my mind, it did, and on my computer, I have an agreement version that actually extends to 2025, has the placement for Richard Wilson to sign as Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and Glenn Kaufman to sign as Chairman of the Planning Board. Glenn does not remember signing it. We, I asked him when he was in our office on Monday, or no, last Thursday, and I can't find it anywhere. I looked at the property file online to see if it's filed there. So with that being the case, and I have reached out to Dan and told him that I can't find that signed form, but if he has a copy of it, I would love to see it. But short of that, I think we really have to at least hold a public hearing on this application again. I don't think he has to submit any new plans to us, because he's working off the approved plan. But we need to let the butters know, and I never came to our public hearings, but the process says we should, we shouldn't let an approval lapse and not have a public process to extend. So I, I told him this last week. I haven't heard from him, so he may be busy looking for it, and if he finds something, that's fine, but he needs to, I think he, we're going to end up, he's going to have to reapply. And his dead, the deadline for February would be next Thursday, I think. So we likely would see this maybe in March.
Okay.
What did the original agreement back when we finally approved the project?
The original one got into 2023.
Three, oh.
2023, four years, from 2019 to 2023. In the middle of it all, when Mr. Wilson came online and did his proposed and approved excavation, and we split the bond in half.
Right, that's-
We, that whole process took place. I, so maybe in my feeble mind, I thought we extended Dan's agreement as well. I just can't see any evidence of that in minutes or-
So when, when did the second, Mr. Wilson's agreement expire? Was his?
His, I think his went four years also. His probably does go to 2025.
Yeah. Because that might be something that maybe-
So I'm, I'm hoping Dan, maybe Dan has it. I haven't heard him tell me that he doesn't have it, but short of us having something that shows we did that beyond me having a draft copy of something, the draft copy is lovely, and goes in depth and says we're continuing this to November of 2025, but I don't see it somewhere.
But there was nothing in the minutes?
We can't, no, we both looked.
No, but nothing in the minutes, I mean- No, but nothing in the minutes, that means no action was taken.
So we can't, I can't, my mind just wants it to have happened, but I think it can happen.
Yeah, I think we should authorize...
I can't speak to signing anything, but I seem to remember a discussion about the extension because, but I could be getting it confused because initially I know that there were some concerns about work that was being conducted that fell outside the scope of the plan and...
We had enforcement action that took place.
Correct. So that may all be blurry, but I do seem to remember some discussion about extending. And I can go back and look. I have stopped taking detailed notes because Robyn came on board and...
I mean, I would...
So I can go back and look and see if I, in one of the old books, have anything written down.
That would be wonderful, because I want to, Dan has been really good to work with. He's been very professional. I don't want to subject him to anything, anything unnecessary, but I don't see anything that prevents us from needing to at least hold a public hearing.
So basically, barring any receipt of any document from Dan, we need to notify him that he needs to reapply?
Yeah, I've already done.
Oh, you've done that, okay. And I think it's only fair because the butters who may have either received notice or whatever would be under the understanding that the trucking trucks would stop it.
It would have to be a fully...
Noted.
Public hearing or the law.
Right, yeah. So that, because, you know, if they thought, oh, good, you know, that trucking is going to stop this year.
Right, right.
And it keeps going, then they may start asking questions.
So that's what we stated.
You reached out? Okay. Did you talk to Rich Wilson at all about it?
I have not reached out to Rich. I could, maybe he remembers.
You never know.
But it would have been filed in the electronic copy file, I would think. And I, I looked, there's a lot in that file, but I...
If it's not in the minutes, there was no action taken, you might have discussed it, but you didn't. You would have had a vote, right?
Yeah, it is, it's...
Any vote would have been recorded.
In my mind, it went much more regimented, but I can't, I can't prove that. So we have to take the other tab. And I'm sorry, I took a long time to say that.
We got the idea now, so just wait on receiving one.
So this references that there was an additional timing of up to four years. But nothing was voted on in the discussion. Okay. Well, and I guess it might be moved because if we can't find the signed agreement, it doesn't really matter.
Right, we need to, we need to have some...
But that's the closest we got to finding any information. And that was from 8/15/2020? No. So if you want to check your notes, just send me that. Okay. And I was there, right?
Oh. Good question.
Yes. Okay. Good, because sometimes, you know, those fake memories.
No, no, it's not a fake memory.
What do you do with the agenda? All right, so I'll check those notes, but otherwise, and Glenn, you want me to shoot you an email if I find anything?
I would love you to, yes.
Okay. All right, next up, it's like there is a letter, a letter from Heather Monacop of GPI dated 12/23/24 in regards to 266 Route 125, map R 42 lot 17-1. It's a waiver request of the 45-day extension limit and a request for a 12-month extension to February 28th, 2026.
And we did this last year, and it's not something that is our fault or the applicants' fault. And there's absolutely no reason why we should not grant the extension because I know they're working as hard as they can to get this done and...
I, yeah, I would, I would agree. And I, I heard way back in like May of last year that they were, and this was from NHDOT, that they were right on the cusp of issuing the permit. And now it's been nine full months still.
They don't know what the word "it's right on the cusp" means.
So it's definitely frustrating for everybody. But really, the motion by the board should be two-fold. One, to waive our 45-day requirement in our site plan review regulations. And then another, to agree to a one-year extension.
Chris, this is the property that's located on 120, 266 125, the old Sears logistic property, just north of, just south of the courthouse. It's a big development, they're putting in a warehouse distribution center. That's what they're owning.
18-acre building.
You're driving towards Brentwood, it's on the left.
You're heading north, it's on the left, yeah.
You would never have any idea what's back there.
Not from 125, right.
Yeah.
I should have picked up a washer and dryer years ago.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
18 acres under one roof.
Okay.
But they're waiting for Department of Transportation to finalize how they access and egress from the property.
And the off-site improvements that are necessary.
Yeah.
Because it includes new lights and martial wear.
So can we do one motion or do we need two?
No, two.
It would be better if you did two.
I'll move that we waive the 45-day maximum extension requirement of the regulation.
Second.
Okay.
Motion by Peter, second by Ellie. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. And I would move that we grant the one-year extension to meet the requirements of the conditional approval.
Can we, can we...
Could limit that to certain...
Can we do the extension to February 28th?
Yeah, that's February...
26th, that's in the letter.
Yes, 12 months, because it hasn't, doesn't expire until...
Exactly.
So we're going to extend it by one year from expiration. So to grant a one-year extension to February 28th, 2026.
So, second.
Motion by Peter, second by Ellie. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. And that prints is all that's on the agenda. Is there any other board business that needs to be taken up this evening?
Seriously?
Pass fall a request from somebody who wanted to move a business into the trailer place, which is, hang on a sec, 65 Route 125. And it was a repo business, so they would bring in cars and store them on site and... Yeah, we, we said that it would require a site plan amendment and Glenn presumably notified them of that. And presumably you did, right?
I believe that I did, yes.
Yeah. At any rate, it looks like that that business is happening anyway. There is some kind of business which has a lot of unregistered cars parked on their grass in the back and new floodlighting and some...
So I will, I'll make sure that I correspond with them on Thursday. But in any event, the requirement is that they, if you need to, if you're doing a new commercial activity, you have to cycle line review. So we will get to the bottom of this.
And what was the address on that again?
It's 65 Route 125, it's HT Properties. It's the R9 Lot 88.
HT Properties?
HT Properties LLC, I don't know what it's... It's a trailer place, you know, where the hairstyling salon and trailer, tractor and trailer sales are on just south of Newton Junction Road. On, you know, just south of the pool, the pool place is the first place. And then right south of that, oh, no, south of that is Atlantic Properties, and then...
Mastroianni's old property.
Yeah, yeah, Mastro...
It's Mastroianni's property.
Yeah, is it? I thought, no, he, he had... He had the pool place, then it's the next one south of that. It's Jorazol property.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, it's, and so that's the location. It's just south of Dan's second-hand shop there.
Oh, just south of Dan's shop property?
Yeah.
It's in that intersection, right beyond your Junction Road, on the left side, heading south.
Yeah, heading south, it's on the left-hand side, it's just after you get through the intersection, and there's a hair salon and an old, an old house. And next to that, there's a bunch of, there's three commercial, but steel buildings. And, and one of them is the trailer place, someone sells those blue tractors, I can't remember the brand.
So we will provide the boards okay with this. I will make sure that they will contact us, tell them what's needed. And if they don't respond, I'll have to also call Pedro. We won't step there yet. Because Pedro looks a lot busy doing that.
Seems like a busy man.
He is a busy man.
He is a busy man.
All right, any other business? Hearing none, we will call the motion, the motion, the meeting adjourned at 7:27 PM. Chris?
Good job.